I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, what my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Calhoun.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
McGearity.
Here.
Rick.
Your.
Your.
Okay, moving on to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. We'll start with our grand announcement of welcome back, City Manager Shipman. We're glad that you're occupying the seat next to us and glad you're in one piece.
Yes.
Good to be back. Thank you.
All right, and now we'll move on to Macomb County Public Works Rain Barrel Program. Today, we're going to welcome Commissioner Miller. And Mr. Shipman, do you want to go ahead and list your agenda?
It is.
Okay.
I'll quick some candidates.
Okay, go ahead.
There's no ladders around here.
No. No, there'll be no tree stands put up here. City of Mount Clemens, in cooperation with Macomb County Public Works Commissioner Candace Miller, will be instituting a rain barrel program designed to reduce combined sewer overflows to Lake St. Clair as well as aid local flooding issues. Mount Clemens residents in the combined sewer districts will have an opportunity to receive one free rain barrel and installation kit per household. In addition to further reducing CSOs, rain barrels will help save residents on their outdoor watering costs while also saving the city from having to treat the storm water. Macomb County Public Works has committed $10,000 to Mount Clemens, which will provide approximately 55 rain barrel kits. Very pleased to announce that Steve Saft of Nickel and Saft Insurance has pledged an additional $10,000 for another 55 rain barrel kits, and Mount Clemens will also be contributing $10,000. The total funding will provide 166 rain barrel kits to Mount Clemens residents. The rain barrel kit includes a 58-gallon barrel, plumbing fixtures installed, a recycled wood stand, and connectors. The resident commitment is to only use them for personal use, no resale, and return to the city if not wanted. The barrels will be distributed through the Mount Clemens Department of Public Works. Forms will be available on the city website and social media for those who would like to request a barrel.
All right, and now we welcome Commissioner Candace Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. And just before I start, I'm going to pass these out to Commissioner York to pass along to all of you.
Thank you so much.
Since your City Manager mentioned flooding, actually, before I get to the rain barrel, I thought I would give you a report tonight about a flooding issue that you're also very concerned about, since that's really a principal part of our responsibility. And so, we received a call from City Manager Shipman and also the mayor about some flooding that was happening in the Rose condominium area there by Dunham. And off of Rose Street, a lot of the residents in that area had been flooding for a number of reasons. One of it because our drain there was in need of a lot of clean-out and maintenance. So I just wanted to report to you that we have cleaned out now 2,400 feet of drain in that area. And if you're driving down Rose, you can look over, you can see where all the construction equipment was. And hopefully, this is going to relieve a lot of the flooding to the immediate neighbors. And I would just report to you as well, there's no cost to the residents. We were able to accommodate that within existing drain funds, so we're happy to report that as well. Now, on to the rain barrels. You know, really, a principal impetus in our job, in our department, is how we can reduce combined sewer overflows from going out into our beautiful Lake St. Clair. And our department has underway well over $100 million worth of projects. There was a huge, if anyone read the front page of the Macomb Daily yesterday, it was reporting on a project that we have at our Chapaton facility, which is at the end of Nine Mile Road in Jefferson. And, you know, we just have a number of different projects, all designed to stop combined sewer overflow. So our department is focused on this. I think Macomb County is focused on this as well. I don't think you can run into anybody, whether you live in Mount Clemens or Clinton Township or anywhere in Macomb County, that doesn't recognize the significance of Lake St. Clair and how important it is for all of us to do everything that we can. So, you know, those are some huge projects that we have going on, and they're going to make a significant impact. In fact, by the end of this year, we expect that our Chapaton retention basin, which is our largest one, to have reduced in the last eight years since I've been there, reduced the CSOs close to 80%. I mean, really significant things. But, you know, it's something that government can do. We've been very successful in getting assistance through the state legislature, through ARPA funds, through all of our federal delegation, Democrats, Republicans. It's a bipartisan effort, truly. And the county as well has helped us with ARPA funds with that. But the reason I'm here tonight is because so many residents, I'm sure you all hear it, people think, "What can I do? What can I do as a homeowner, as a resident?" And in Mount Clemens, you still have some of the older areas. I'm not sure exactly the boundaries, but there are still some areas where there are combined systems. Back in the day, everybody had combined systems, particularly in the older communities. So what that means is you have a combined system of your sanitary sewer and your storm drains. And that happens when, what happens actually, when you have a very heavy rain event or a lot of snow melt at the end of winter or what have you. These antiquated underground infrastructure systems just can't handle it. And so, it results in flooding, and, you know, you end up with combined sewer overflows, et cetera. Mount Clemens has really stepped up over the years to separate your systems. And so, I applaud you all for that. But anyway, the rain barrel is a small thing, but it's a thing. And it's something that people can do on their own property, within the footprint of their own property, to gather water, storm water, right, rainwater. And so, that's what we're here for tonight. We started a pilot program, actually, in the city of Roseville about two months ago. They went through the rain barrels there so quickly, it was amazing to us. So we thought, "Well, even we can figure out, this is a good program." A lot of interest. And we just recently did the same thing in East Point. But we use funds there in a drain fund that's paid for. It's a particular drain fund that's paid for with the cities of Roseville, St. Clair Shores, and East Point. And I had some money, and the mayors of those communities agreed that we could spend that money on those rain barrels. Then it was approached by Steve Saft, who you all know. And I'm just going to say, every, and he doesn't want me to talk about him, but I am going to anyway. He said, "Oh, I don't really need any recognition." This is just something that he believed in. But he approached me and said, "You know, I really love this rain barrel program you got going in these communities. We'd like to do something like that in Mount Clemens, perhaps." And I said, "Well, I'd like to, but this," I mentioned, "this was a particular set of funds that we had in the other communities." And he said, "Well, how about if I advance some money toward this?" And I'm standing on the street corner talking to him. I said, "Well, how much would you be willing to put in?" And he said, "How about if I wrote a check for $10,000?" So I'll just tell you, you know, this city, I don't have to tell all of you, has some remarkable people in it.
Yes.
Committed, committed to this town, to the residents, and wanting to do things for the city, for their, as I say, for the residents, for our environment. And so, I said, "Well, if you'll do that, I'll find $10,000 within our funds." And so, we're going to, Public Works has $10,000 to commit as well through the, what we call our administrative fund. And then, I called the mayor, and she said, "Well, if that's all happening, we're going to try to find $10,000 from the city as well." And so, what a great partnership, I think, right? And so, this really, as the City Manager had mentioned, will buy us 166 rain barrels at the current price of these rain barrels, complete kits. And they will be distributed through your Department of Public Works. These rain barrels were originally olive barrels. And so, you know, they're not ending up in a recycling bin, for one thing, right? We're going to reuse them. And that's why they have some Greek writing in the back. I was at first going, "What is this?" But that's what it is. And then, we've developed a little sticker that we put on the front, protecting Lake St. Clair, and it has our logo, the county logo, and it has the Mount Clemens, City of Mount Clemens logo. And then, there's a little stand that comes with it, the wood stand, which is all recycled wood as well, so all of those things. But the last thing I would say about this, my assistant lives in the city of Sterling Heights. She has three small children under the age of five, and she has a rain barrel. And these little kids are always going, you know, they have to go to the rain barrel and water their garden and water their plants and everything. And I just think this is a way to educate the next generation, right, of how things that they can do and how important it is for all of them to think about our environment, protecting the lake, et cetera. So this is going to help us keep more combined sewer overflows out of our magnificent Lake St. Clair, but it also is a way for residents to save money on their water bill, right, their water and sewer bill as well. So that's our proposal, and I'm sure you have to have a particular motion, but if there's any questions or comments about the rain barrel program or anything else that's happening in our department, I'm available.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Commissioner Miller? I'm sure you have comments.
Will we administer it, or will your department administer?
DPW.
And will, is it first come, first served?
Yes.
And it's only for residents who are on the combined sewer system, you know, in those areas, which it is designated on the website?
Oh, okay.
So.
Yeah, we've got an interactive, when we post this, there'll be an interactive map so people can click on and see if they're in the CSO district.
Very cool.
We've got about 2,211 people in a CSO district, so hoping it won't be hard to distribute these.
Let's see, when are we hitting the rain barrels? When are they supposed to be delivered?
About four to five weeks.
Four to five weeks they should be delivered to your DPW.
Here's a resident in Mount Clemens now that has a couple in his yard. He's, I think, on Avery, and he uses them for his garden. It's very, very unique. I thought it was weird until he started explaining, and it totally makes sense. Yeah, excellent. Thank you for bringing that.
You're just, I could tell you're.
Yeah. I just want to say thank you.
Pulls it from the roof.
Really appreciate all the work you've done trying to make our waters better.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. I tell you what, though, I'm an old sailor, really. And one thing I learned from racing sailboats, it's all hands on deck, and it's a team. It's always a team. So I have an excellent staff in my department, and we've been able to have great partnerships with municipalities all throughout Macomb County. And as I say, with our legislative delegation as well, Democrats, Republicans. Denise and I have talked, and she helped me with a big piece of legislation to stop sewer wipes, right? From, I mean, I can't believe we're having this discussion in our age, but listen, some of these things have to be discussed because they are wreaking havoc on our sanitary sewers and just changing the packaging. And again, to educate people, just don't flush these down your toilet. So there's a lot of, you know, there's never one answer to all of these things, right? It's very asymmetrical, but it takes everybody working together, and that's what we're trying to do. If we could, I'm going to have my guys move this rain barrel right here. If the city council would just take a quick picture with us, we'd like to post it on our Facebook and maybe get it out to some of our media friends as well.
Should we roll the?
You guys can roll. I'll send this one out.
We can roll you.
Just roll out the barrel instead. We got it, just keep singing.
Mr. J. Crew.
Not too bad. It's, I'm going through. I could, yeah, I could hold that up.
Let's just all stay in there.
Tallest person behind the barrel, please. Bobby Spencer. I said the tallest one behind the barrel.
Are we a little more balanced?
I can't see you.
How's that?
Hi, Brittany. I have Krishna McGrath. Can I be scooped just out a little bit just so?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Everybody, one, two, three.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Mark. You used to be on my board when I was in township.
I'd be behind the barrel, but.
I told you when you seen your head, I got behind it. Press the shoulder to the background. My shoulder working very well.
You won't have to go to the gym tomorrow.
I don't know how I sat down because I was.
I think they said $58.
$58?
I think so.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five, maybe.
I think, something like that.
If they could sign up and.
Buy them?
Buy them.
Maybe.
For those that are not on the combined.
We'll have to get their contact or something, yeah, there, yeah. All right, well, we will move on to the presentation of life-saving awards to Deputy Myron. Am I saying it correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. Deputy Myron and Deputy Gross. If I can have both of you come on up to the microphone. And we also have joining us our State Representative Denise Mencer.
Yes.
I don't know. I think she said that one crawled up.
The city of Mount Clemens presents the life-saving award for the Macomb County Sheriff Deputy Anthony Gross. On September 12th, 2024, Deputy Anthony Gross performed a heroic selfless act, thereby helping to save the life of Thomas Kaliba and preventing what was almost certain to be a multi-vehicle tragedy. Deputy Gross, a sheriff deputy trainee with only two weeks on the job, steadily kept pace of his patrol vehicle, maneuvering the same to allow his partner to climb out the passenger window and through the driver's window of a pickup truck whose driver was unresponsive and suffering from a medical emergency. Thank you, Deputy Gross, for quick thinking, heroic response to a potentially tragic situation. Signed, Mayor Laura Cropp. The city of Mount Clemens presents the life-saving award to the Macomb County Sheriff Deputy Nicole Myron. On September 12th, 2024, Deputy Nicole Myron performed a heroic selfless act, thereby saving the life of Thomas Kaliba and preventing what was almost certain to be a multi-vehicle tragedy. Deputy Myron climbed out of the passenger window of a moving Macomb County Sheriff Department patrol vehicle and through the window of Thomas Kaliba's moving pickup truck to gain control of and stop Mr. Kaliba's truck during a medical emergency that he was suffering from. Thank you, Deputy Myron, for your quick thinking, heroic response to a potentially tragic situation. Signed, Mayor Laura Cropp. We're going to hear from State Representative Denise Mencer.
In recognition, and I'm not going to read these out loud, but in recognition of your quick thinking, your decisive action, your courage, and your commitment to safety in your community, I have here for you both tributes signed by the Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist and by Governor Gretchen Whitmer.
And State Representative Denise Spencer.
Nicole, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
For doing an absolutely heroic job, your community safe. And Deputy Gross, thank you so much for doing a wonderful job keeping your community safe. Thank you.
Mayor Cropp, I think Deputy Myron, I think this is the second time she's done the same act, if I remember correctly. I think you did this one other time, didn't you?
Um, that is extreme.
Yeah. This one's a little more extreme than the other one. Yeah, but that's still two. I mean, let alone to do it once, but to do it twice is pretty amazing, so.
That's the difference.
Of course.
The video was on national TV.
Yeah.
He was only on the job for two weeks. Wow, that's awesome.
Thank you, again.
Well, between the rain barrels and the life-saving awards, I'd say it's a good way to start the evening.
Yes.
But we will move on to adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented. Support.
Any questions or comments about the agenda? Seeing none, call the roll, please. Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
McGearity.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Your.
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to public participation. This is the portion of the meeting that we invite the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you come to the microphone, give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. If there's anyone who would like to address the commission at this time, feel free to come to the microphone.
How do you follow that? That is beautiful. I'm so proud. I'm Deena Carwile. You knew my address also?
Yes.
5118 Galaxy Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan.
Thank you.
I'm also a registered nurse, and I work at McLaren-McCone. And I am the president of the service group and the registered nurses at McLaren-McCone and the registered nurses and radiology technologists over at Henry Ford Rochester. So, as I said, I'm the president of Local 40. At McLaren-McCone, we have the service group and the ORNs. I ask for your support tonight for the service group members. Administration has kept this group from two raises by bargaining in bad faith and dragging out negotiations. Their final offer permits them to hire and new employees at higher wages than longtime employees. It allows McLaren-McCone to offer one group a final rate below Michigan's minimum wage, and McLaren is one of the top 10 employers in Mount Clemens. Many service group members are eligible for food stamps and subsidized or government health insurance. With continued language to outsource their jobs at any time, we have asked for an interim wage adjustment as they just gave the rest of the hospital 3.5%. And they did give the ORNs an interim, but deny the service group. We ask for your support for these good people. Very quickly, Local 40 asks for your support of the Safe Patient Care Act. This act knows no party. It places safe limits on the number of patients per nurse based on national standards. The hospital must post information about the law and inform patients on how to report violations. No mandatory overtime. Hospitals must disclose to the public their actual ORN to patient ratios, which are closely tied to good patient outcomes. The Safe Patient Care Act addresses rampant ORN understaffing and excessive forced overtime. Local 40 cares about our patients and our community. If I may, I have a letter that I would ask.
If you want to just pass it to that, then. Yep, yep, she will be happy to pass it down.
I want to thank you all very much for listening and for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brad Schuman. My address is 26604 Autumn Lake, Chesterfield, Michigan. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, my name is Brad Schuman. I come before you today as the vice president of the service group, Look Unit at McLaren-McCone. I'm a lavatory assistant, but most importantly, a devoted servant to the community since 1999. I'm here to speak for my colleagues and accomplice families who depend on McLaren-McCone for the care and well-being. Staggering 92% of the nurses have reported that the lack of support staff negatively impacts patient care at McLaren-McCone. Our unit embodies the critical yet undervalued role that keeps the hospital running. We are the unsung heroes handling clerical duties, EKGs, EEGs, endoscopy, pharmacy tech duties, patients' safety associates, everything except for what the nurses, then the nurse assistants. We are the first faces the patients see and often the last one they interact with. Yet tragically, our team is not recognized in the same breath as nurses, even though the care provided is a collective effort demanding the commitment of every role within our facility. 2017, 2015, 2009, 1999, and 1979. Our examples are some seniority dates of dedicated workers whose vital contributions to this community have gone unnoticed, and I around 100 more. Despite the years of service, these individuals are scraping by, earning a mere 3% above the new starting rates and facing the harsh reality of poverty. Many of them are left with no choice but to rely on state-assisted programs like Medicaid and food assistance and to take on multiple jobs to make ends meet. As I prepare for a lobby day aimed at helping our members sign up for Medicaid and food assistance, my heart aches to think that those who care for our community often struggle to care for themselves. Among one of the largest employers in Macomb County, particularly Mount Clemens' prominent nonprofit employers, it is disheartening to see that those who serve with loyalty and passion often have to battle for their own survival. For over a year now, we've been negotiating fair wages and more importantly, for the recognition of our senior staff deserves. However, McLaren management appears more focused on cuts, layoffs, subcontracting, and troubling illegal union busting tactics. We have federal charges filed that are currently under investigation, highlighting the urgent need for change. Many skilled professionals have left, left for skilled opportunities elsewhere, somewhere they feel valued, appreciated, and respected. When our talented individuals walk away, it means families in our community, including our, including my own children, are left seeking care outside our borders.
Sorry, that's our three.
Thank you, yep, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and move to approval of minutes. Sorry, administrative responses, I don't see any. Okay, we'll move to approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as presented. Support.
Any questions or comments about the minutes? Call the roll, please. Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
McGearity.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Your.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Okay, moving to general business, 9A, quarter one budget amendments. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to amend the City of Mount Clemens 2024-2025 fiscal year budget to cover the anticipated activity for the funds as presented in the attached summary of amendments.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Shipman.
Attached, please find the recommended city budget amendment for the general fund, downtown development authority fund, and sewer fund. Michigan's Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, as amended by Public Act 621 of 1978, requires subsequent amendments to the original adopted budget for any function that exceeds its budget appropriation. General fund highlights include the original FY 2025 budget, both revenues and expenditures related to the Al Will Steel Corporation warehouse building permits totaling $350,000 were excluded. In addition, the amendment also. In addition, the amendment also includes $74,661 of additional expenditures related to the increase in the McComb County Sheriff's contract, which was previously approved by the City Commission. Altogether, the amendment to the General Fund reduces fund balance by approximately $75,000. Downtown Development Authority Fund, the FY 2025 budget, contribution from the DDA Fund for the Cherry Street Mall project was not included for $25,000. Other DDA expenses are being reduced by a total of $25,000 to offset the contribution for the Cherry Street Mall project. Altogether, the amendment to the DDA Fund has no effect on the fund balance. Sewer Fund, the original FY 2025 budget, sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation were not included. Altogether, the amendment to the Sewer Fund reduces the net position by approximately $213,000. This reduction in that position will be covered by the unidentified capital needs assumption in the water sewer rate study. We anticipate presenting the commission with additional amendments as the 2024-25 fiscal year progresses, as we have additional financial data and understanding of how some of the city's projects are progressing. And that is from your team at Plant Moran. And with us tonight is Danielle. To answer any questions you have, Danielle, and if you have anything you want to add to that.
Hello, it's good to see everybody again. Um, I don't have anything to add. It was just three simple amendments. I just wanted to be here in case you had any questions further on them.
So just so I understand, so you only have to do an amendment if it exceeds a certain amount? Or, we've had other things that go up and down.
Yeah, so this is just for the first quarter. So those were the three large items that we identified that had already happened. So we wanted to bring it to your attention. In the second quarter, we'll probably have a bigger amendment that will have smaller amounts on it because we'll more likely be able to tell where we're going to end up at the end of the fiscal year and if we need an amendment.
Then I do have one other question on the $350,000 one.
Mm-hmm.
So we issued permits for all that revenue?
Yep.
What's the expense?
Um, Safeville, so the company that helps run the building department, that's to pay them for administering that permit fee?
Equal?
Yes.
Okay, so, does the city make any money on permits?
Yeah.
Just not in this case?
Hey, you want to?
Yeah, 28, we receive 28% of the, of the permit.
So that's not, just not reflected on the.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I would just like to comment that in the past, we've not received budgets quarter, uh, budget amendments quarterly, and this, I feel like, gives us a good handle on, instead of a very end-of-the-year, uh, throw-it-together kind of presentation. So I really appreciate the professionalism and the communication that this gives the commission. So thank you very much for that.
No problem, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, then, uh, call the roll, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Croft.
Yes.
McGarryty.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Okay, moving to 9B, Ice Arena Property Resolution. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution directing the minutes for building of Mount Clemens convey the ice arena to the city of Mount Clemens for purposes of sale.
Support.
One of them. Uh, Mr. Shipman.
In 1994, the Ice Arena property was ceded to the Municipal Building Authority of Mount Clemens for the purpose of bond issuance for the construction of the Mount Clemens Ice Arena. Building authorities exist for the purpose of financing capital projects. Building authority financing was common in 1994. Though their need and relevance faded after capital improvement bonds were introduced as an option under Michigan law in 2001. After the bonds were paid off, the building authority conveys the deed back to the municipality. This action takes place outside the bond proceedings. That did not happen in the case of the Ice Arena. The deed was never conveyed back to the city. The Municipal Building Authority of Mount Clemens is no longer in existence. Pursuant to MCL 123.96, the city of Mount Clemens is the incorporating unit of the authority, and the City Commission is the governing body. Therefore, the commission can direct the conveyance of title back to the city and authorize a person to sign the conveying instrument on behalf of the authority. The attached resolution will allow for conveyance of the Ice Arena back to the city and authorizes Mayor Laura Croft to sign the attached quitclaim deed on behalf of the authority. The city attorney drafted and approved the attached resolution and quitclaim deed.
All right, who has questions?
I'm over substance.
Yeah.
So I'd like to think of when I'm.
After this, do you expect any other?
We don't expect this one.
Archaic.
No, I believe that this is the last piece to that puzzle, and we are, probably would hope to close the end of the month.
Oh, yes.
And we don't believe there was any other building put into the proper, the building authority of this nature. We, we, I mean.
The, the problem, well, the assessor can't find anything. The problem is because, um, this was found with a title search. Unless we actually did a title search, pay for a title search, we might not actually find it, so. Because it's not a problem to convey it back if for some reason another piece of city-owned property, he wanted to sell it, of course it would come up then, and we'd just do the same thing again, but.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Anyone else? All right, call the roll, please.
Croft.
Yes.
McGarryty.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
General Business 9C, delinquent tax. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve special assessment rolls 2404 and 2405 for delinquent bills and placement on the city winter tax roll for 2024.
Support.
Mr. Shipman.
Each year, it is necessary to place delinquent bills on special assessment rolls for collection. Attached for your review are delinquent utility bills and delinquent general bills, broken down as follows. Special Assessment Rule 24-04 for delinquent utility bills in the amount of $25,1956, and Special Assessment Rule 24-05 for delinquent general bills in the amount of $90,478.52. Those bills are broken down as follows. Delinquent sidewalk in the amount of $1,0337. Delinquent weed cutting in the amount of $11,476.52. Delinquent vacant registrations in the amount of $58,500. Delinquent rental registrations in the amount of $6,325, and delinquent enforcements at $12,840. Note that a 15% transfer fee will apply to all delinquent billings except for sidewalk invoices.
Okay, who has questions or comments?
This automatically goes on the Jex building for the winter taxes?
Yes.
I would like everybody to take note that most of this is commercial buildings and not to residents. The greater majority of it.
And the water, there's one for $7,171. How does it get that big?
Well, if, if, depends on, you know, the size of the facility, but if they have a leak, you know, they don't know about it for a month, and then they get a big bill, and then they get put on a payment plan, and, or of course, you know, they can, this can something that could drag on for, you know, a year and a half if they're making a payment, and finally get to the point where you've given them all the opportunity you can, and then you're left with no choice but to, you know, if they fail to make the payments, you're pretty much left with no choice except to, you know, put it to taxes, so.
But I'm assuming that their water is not turned off?
Exactly.
No, but.
It doesn't happen?
We don't have, currently have anybody. I know shut-offs were today, but before today, that was shut-off, that is still shut-off. That didn't get their water turned back on by paying their bill or making a payment.
Is that commercial?
That's what I'm looking at.
Uh, I don't.
Doesn't appear to be.
It doesn't appear to be, yeah. Yeah, it's.
So it's not commercial?
It's Euclid, so.
Most likely residential, Euclid.
For the winter registrations, I see a lot of late fees for that. They're very dollar amounts. So, for instance, the one at the top, they've accrued a number of $25 late fees to get to that point. Are there any addresses where every time we, uh, have to put them on the, um, the tax rolls, they just, they keep showing up, and they just haven't taken care of their, uh, registration? That's all they need to do is stop giving late fees?
All they got to do is pay it. I don't know, I wish I had the answer for some people that don't pay. A lot of times, even on a, on a water, people admit, "I just forgot." And they tend to, some of those tend to forget every month for some reason, and it's late, and, and pay a fee, so.
Do, do we know on the ones that we turned over for tax, um, commercial, you know, for the, um, winter taxes? If this is like the first time around or third time, or, do we have any idea? Because I know it's three years, and then they have to close, but.
We don't track that.
Okay.
Um, anything that's been turned over, this last tax sale, it's sold.
Okay.
Anything that doesn't sell, we get first crack at it, so.
So that I have a spreadsheet that I provide quarterly that lists the vacant commercial buildings, and we do list how many years.
Years, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious how far some of these are, you know, down the road for foreclosure?
Yeah, the first year we started doing it coming out of COVID was 2021, so we're getting year four, $4,000. So we have some properties, um, just looking today that are paying a total of $10,000 in fees, commercial property, vacant.
Okay.
And those typically get moved to taxes, they're not going to.
Okay, thank you.
We usually take a look at this, too, and, uh, we average around 65 to 70 non-PR for these, meaning no personal residence exemption or like to think of it as non-owner occupied. So 65 to 70% of everything that gets transferred is usually, it's usually a rental situation.
These all, all except the sidewalks have that 15% transfer fee, too.
That's correct.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
McGarryty.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Croft.
Yes.
Agenda item 10, consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
Call the roll, please.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Croft.
Yes.
McGarryty.
Yes.
All right, moving to city manager's report.
The Historical Commission is hosting its Holiday Homes Tour on Saturday, December 7th. Tickets are $25 and can be purchased through the Evenbly website. For questions, please contact 586-372-9044. Reminder that city offices will be closed on Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, November 29th for the Thanksgiving holiday. Thursday's refuse pickup will be delayed until Friday, and Friday's refuse pickup will be delayed until Saturday. The curbside comp house pickup season is scheduled to end on Friday, December 6th, 2024. Election Day went smoothly at all Mount Clemens voting precincts with a 61% voter turnout for this election. Is that possibly an unofficial record?
What do you mean?
The 61%, I know we talked about that was pretty high.
It seems high.
Yeah, it is, it's record, nice.
Actually, the 2020 was a little bit more, to be honest with you. So it wasn't really close.
Uh, we were close, I was curious if you looked it up.
Yes, I did.
We wish to thank all of our dedicated election workers who helped ensure that Mount Clemens voters could safely and securely exercise their right to vote in all three elections this year. Recreation, register soon to not miss our How Sweet It Is to Be Loved by You Daddy Daughter Dance on December 14th, 2024. For more information or to register for any of our programs, visit www.mountclemensrecreation.org. Also, McLaren's Medical Outreach Clinic will be at Kearns Community Center every third Tuesday to be of service to those in our community without health insurance. For more information on this program, please call 586-493-3640. Happy to announce the city of Mount Clemens will be receiving approximately $31,574.59 in community development block grant funds for FY 2024 from McComb Urban County Program for Public Service Organizations. The funds will be used to purchase kitchen equipment for the Kearns Community Center. A public hearing for the funds will be held on December 2nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM during the regular city commission meeting. Our upcoming events, downtown Christmas open house and tree lighting, Friday, November 22nd from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. San and Mrs. Claus will arrive by horse-drawn sleigh at 6:00 PM. Downtown activities start at 6:30 and end at 9:00. Mickey and Minnie Mouse will join Mayor Croft at 48 Cherry Street for a Christmas story at 7:00 PM. There'll be free horse-drawn trolley rides from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM. For more information, check on downtown Mount Clemens social media sites and our website. And the 49th Annual Mount Clemens Santa Parade will be Saturday, November 23rd at 10:00 AM on Main Street. For more information, go to the Mount Clemens Santa Parade website.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for city manager Shipman? We will move on to public participation. This is the second opportunity of the meeting to address the commission. Again, we ask that you come to the microphone, give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our two-minute rule. We welcome anyone to the microphone. Okay, seeing none, we will move to commissioner comments, and we will start with Commissioner Yor.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate the deputies who are here on their life-saving. It's just a miraculous story, as a nurse myself, and just, really, um, I feel grateful for them, so, thank you. I also want to mention that the dedication of Paul Boone Way was, um, very uplifting. To be at that event Friday night, and it was a special moment for the Boone family, so thank you for everyone who had a part in that. And as we move into the thoughtful holiday, I want everybody to take a moment and remember what they're thankful for and really hang on to that. We have a lot of great stuff happening in Mount Clemens, so I'm sure I'll see you all there. And it's nice to see so many people in our audience, thank you for coming tonight. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner McGarryty.
Just wanted to encourage everyone to continue to deposit into the city of Mount Clemens. We had a lot of good stories sharing this evening. So if it's just going to, um, get a bowl of soup, um, or try a new restaurant you haven't tried, Mount Clemens is a wonderful place. So continue to come and, and stop downtown, uptown, depends on where you live, I guess. But definitely, this weekend, it is so exciting and electric. It gives you energy to see all the lights and everyone joining together. So just want to, um, encourage everyone to be safe. But I have to say, congratulations to our state rep Denise Wenson. And thank you for what you have been doing. We're looking forward to what more you will be doing for the city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
Thank you. Um, it is a season of thanks, and as I look around this room, I'm very thankful for what, to work with such a great group of people.
That's true.
And staff of the city. Uh, I'm very proud and thankful for all the residents. I'm thankful, thankful for you, Danielle, you've done an amazing job.
I'm thankful for all the McLaren people who work, and all of you service providers. Thank you for everything that you do. It does make a difference when you're in that hospital, for sure. I'm very thankful for the deputies. I remember seeing that there, um, it was on national TV, the, the video of her crawling out of that sheriff's car and into the moving truck. It was quite, uh, amazing. So many wonderful people that we have to be thankful for. I'm thankful that our city manager is back in the chair. Uh, we missed you. Agent. Very grateful that he is here. Again, there's so many things that we have to be thankful for, and, um, I want to thank everyone for all that you do for the city, and so much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dempsey.
Ditto, ditto, ditto. It's obviously easier when it comes over here, but I also am very thankful for the people who are sitting up here, working with all of you. It is, um, quite a pleasure, and thanks to everyone that comes to the meetings. Get downtown this weekend, you're gonna love the parade, the lights, go to other restaurants, take a walk downtown. December 2nd is the open house, and the Cracker House will be also, will also be open from 12 to 4. If you've never been there, stop in and, uh, check us out. It's all decorated, you'll be amazed. So thank you, and everyone have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Mr. Calhoun.
Uh, I want to start by, um, I'm a new self, and I'm a reporter, and I'm getting to the news, and so, um, I, uh, attend, and thank you all for the education I care, and so, uh, sure, I have a few, but, but also, um, you know, we do have a lot of people in our community who are employed by the end, so, um, and, um, I think we should go and be more supportive of them. It's important for tomorrow's night, um, to step up from residents and to build positive stories and, uh, to, um, make sure that we, uh, do, because, uh, when, when we go to the hospital, uh, people will take care of us, they're, you are, uh, we have to rely on them, they have to take care of us, and they have to show it's right, and so, thank you for coming. I got to, uh, to ride along with the shores of the park, um, last week, uh, I jumped and sat my lap, um, and, um, stayed for, I think, three hours, and it was really nice to see professionalism, uh, that they showed there, um, so thankful for that. Also, I was riding along with the fire department at 7:00 AM the next day, so I'm so tired. And that was also a fantastic experience to learn about the work they do there, and I was enjoying a lot of the process, and to grow up in the bucket, which I'm afraid heights, and so that was, that was a lot. So, that was, I'm really grateful to, um, to first responders, uh, to everyone, everybody else, everybody said, yeah, for it, so, uh, thank you for the opportunity of joining all for just a, a little bit of the work that you all do.
Thank you. And Commissioner Rick.
So, ditto, all the way down, um, uh, second hit, Santa Blade, come up, strikes at 10, it's gonna be awesome.
Close to Main Street.
It does, it does. For those of you who have concerns or questions or suggestions, I strongly recommend contacting the city directly or using the reported issues link on the website. You may find some helpful answers on Facebook, but that's not always gonna be what you get. If you're having issues through those reporting paths, let us know, and we can work on making the system better, but the system is drastically better and getting better every day. So I encourage you, even if you had issues with it before, give it another try. I would like to say that I am thankful that there is so much to do in Mount Clemens that I can't keep straight how many good, fun things are going on. I'd also like to say I'm thankful for being on this commission, being able to be part of a team of our stars. It is ridiculous, the amount of experience and well-intentioned work for the city you all do, and I'm humbled to be here. And if anybody else would be interested, be humbled to be part of a team of ours, or they could join one of our boards, committees, or commissions, where there's more information available on our website. End of that, I'd like to just say how many is giving?
Thank you. Let's see, I think you guys covered most of it. Um, I have a coffee talk coming up in December. I'm only doing one considering everyone's schedule, I'm sure is just as busy as mine, uh, but December 10th, so that will be the morning one, Tuesday, December 10th at 9:30 AM at John Skinsley Grill. So join me for a cup of coffee and some conversation about what's going on in Mount Clemens. I want to thank Steve Saft, even though he, well, appreciate it, um, that we mentioned his name again, uh, but, uh, what, what a commitment to our community by just walking up and offering that kind of donation to a specific organi, to a specific cause that we know will help our residents. And I know it's not his first time doing that, so thank you for his continued generosity. If he would accept a local treasure award, I would be one of the first to, um, to nominate him. But speaking of local treasure award, uh, we are accepting nominations for the local treasure award, and if enough people maybe nominated Steve Saft, then he couldn't say no, I don't know. It's worth a try, but, um, those nomination forms can be found on the city's website and/or at this, at the counter, um, and you can come into City Hall and fill it out if you would like, um, or you can email it to us, but, uh, those nominations are due December 16th, and if we don't get any, I'm gonna, I don't know, recruit myself, like, recruit somebody out there, so let's not get into that position. Um, we will have the tinsel trees, uh, those trees will, um, the tinsel tour, sorry, those will be down in Cherry Street Mall again this year, so make sure you stop by downtown, um, I believe December 2nd, they're going to be, um, put up for decorating, and so shortly after that, they'll be available to see them.
Just checking with Jeff, it's gonna be close.
All right, maybe December 3rd. And then I also want to thank, uh, Commissioner Miller, again, um, for her dedication to those rain barrels. I think they're gonna be a great, a great program and very successful, so, um, I want to thank the Boone family for giving us the opportunity to name, um, a home place, uh, between Pine and South Mon Grashit, Paul Boone Way. It was a really nice way to commemorate Paul Boone for doing as much work as he did in this city, so we're really, we are really thankful to do that. Tomorrow, I believe, opens the Anton Art Center's art market, am I right? Tomorrow? So make sure that if you are doing your holiday shopping, um, that you consider going to our art market and to all of our local businesses in Mount Clemens. December 2nd is the shop small, shop local, shop? November 30th, sorry. It's coming up, but anyway, you don't need a Saturday to do it, do it every day. Think, think local and shop local. Um, we, the city is also conducting a parking survey, and that, um, can be, you can go to the link on our social media, I believe it's working now, and it's also on our city website. You can take our, you don't have to necessarily be a resident, but if you are, um, a resident or a user of our downtown, uh, we're asking for specific input on our current parking, and we're gonna, uh, use that survey to make some decisions about the future parking. So, um, we encourage everyone to, uh, participate in that parking survey. Um, I, too, would like to thank Greg for wheeling himself into the meeting today and for, uh, uh, we're really very grateful. It's, you know, one of those situations that you don't know what you have until it's got.
That's right, that's right.
So we're very thankful, um, that you were able to get yourself back here, and.
Good to be back.
Yeah, definitely. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn and send Greg back home. Support. All right, anybody have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Good night, everyone, thanks so much.